And you're on.
Thank you. Good evening. Members of the public who wish to attend the meeting may join the meeting through the following link. It may be found on the website under School Committee, Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings under tonight's School Committee Meeting. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but members of the public may access the meeting via Montague Community Television. The extension of the Emergency Open Meeting Law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The School Committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public if any of these procedures change as soon as practicable. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session and are now reconvening in open session. We are live streaming and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the GMRSD website. And welcome to everyone who's joining us. We'd like to especially welcome our Zoom audience. Please remember to keep your cameras and your mics off during the meeting if you're just in the audience. This would be the time when if someone chooses to have public participation, when that's possible, it's under policy BEDH, and it has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, but no one has indicated they wish this evening. So we'll continue with our regular agenda and starting with important events. Brian?
So the pandemic response advisory committee convenes tomorrow. On the agenda, it says 4:45. It should say four o'clock to 4:45. We usually meet for about 45 minutes to an hour every other week. Also tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, the English Learner Parent Advisory Council will meet at 6:00 PM at Sheffield Elementary School. This coming Friday, the Gill Police will visit Gill Elementary at lunch to discuss Halloween safety with students. Just a reminder that Thursday and Friday, November 4th and 5th, are early release days for parent teacher conferences, and that Thursday, November 11th, is no school for the celebration of Veterans Day. On Sunday, November 14th, the high school and middle school band and choral ensembles will hold a concert at 1:00 PM outside at Pesky Omskut Park in downtown Turner's Falls. And I did want to add in one item that I'll add to my report before sending it out to the community is the Positively Gil Montague Facebook group is currently pulling together a Light Up the Fairgrounds event for students at any of the schools in the district to enter a proposal, and they're going to be, they've posted some information on their Facebook page about this, and I'm going to include it in my report that we send out to try to encourage families to participate. But the idea is for any Gil Montague student to submit a suggestion for a display concept. The group would then select one to move forward with and submit an entry for a district submission and organize a group of willing students and families to help build the display for the Light Up the Fairgrounds event. This would most likely include a drive of some sort on the Facebook group to acquire the lights they would need, and the recommendation from Jen Kadron, who's beginning to organize the event, is that people think about any lights that they might not use anymore and consider donating them. I mean, that would be a good opportunity for us to get rid of some stuff that might be lying around our house and put it to good use. And if for some reason the group wins a prize, the idea was to have that group be split between the friends of schools, the PTOs at the various schools. So we'll keep our fingers crossed and hopefully they'll, they'll have an opportunity to, to put together something nice for the community and get lots of community involvement. And that's it for important events for now.
You're muted, Jane. Sorry.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate that. And our next item is Student Wrap Report, and I see Sina is with us this evening. Good evening.
Hi. So I don't have a ton of new information this week because last week was Booster Week in the high school, and so Student Council was like super, super busy. But I can give you like a little review of what happened last week. We had spirit days, and there was lots and lots and lots of class participation. So many people dressed up. It was pretty awesome. And we also had hallway wars. The seniors' theme was High School Musical because their color was red. The juniors did Hazard, and their color was yellow. The sophomores did Barbie's Dream House because their color is pink, and the freshmen did Clue, the board game, because their color is black. The seniors won for their High School Musical. It had a really cool hallway with balloons and streamers and everything. It's pretty awesome. That Friday where everyone voted, and we judged the hallways, we also had a pep rally that went really well. The middle school was there, and they were like super involved also. So that was really awesome. I was glad they were there. And we also had homecoming that night, which had a huge turnout. Over 130 students showed up, which was like a huge number for our school. That was awesome. If you want to look at some of the photos from the photo booth, the Student Council Instagram page posted them. So if you're interested in that, you can see. There was a really good, there was pretty big for everyone in it, and they had a heater. So it was not freezing because the dance was outside. And otherwise, we have the musical for this year in the high school was in the middle school was announced today. They're going to do Mary Poppins. So that's something I look forward to. And the current play that they're rehearsing right now, Narnia, is going to be performed in mid-November. I'm not sure the exact dates, but I can let you know next meeting. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you so much. And that would be great. Any dates like that when they set them would be wonderful. So we can have it announced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sina.
And there actually were some photos of the hallway wars and some of the things on Positively Gil Montague. It looked wonderful. Everybody did such a great job. Thank you. Okay, next, our superintendent's report, Brian.
So in terms of COVID numbers, we're seeing a decline in Montague and Greenfield and Orange holding steady with just over 20 active cases in the last 14 days. Positivity rates are declining pretty consistently, including down to 1.83% in the entire Commonwealth. So we're hopeful that this trend continues out here. The percentage of individuals 12 and older who are fully vaccinated is up to 64%, and those with at least one dose is up to 72%. The CDC ranks us as high, I'm sorry, as substantial. So we're, we're in the second highest range for risk of transmission, not included in the report. Two pieces of information that I would like to at least share verbally, and then I will add them to the report. They just came in today. As you may have heard on the radio, the commissioner extended the public school mask mandate till January 13th, January 15th, at least. The statement that they gave said, "Consistent with the authority provided by the board and after consulting with medical experts and state health officials, the commissioner is extending the mask requirement through at least January 15th, 2022. With the announcement of the vaccine becoming available in the coming weeks for children ages five to 11, the extension of the mask requirement will allow time for the elementary school population to receive the COVID-19 vaccine." They add, "If a school building demonstrates a vaccination rate of 80% or more of all students and staff in the school through an attestation form submitted to the Department of Education, then vaccinated individuals in that school would no longer be subject to the mask requirement. Whether or not a school or district avails themselves of the 80% vaccination off-ramp is a local decision to be made by school and district leaders in consultation with local health officials." So tomorrow at PRAC, we'll discuss, you know, one of the complications is we can't, we're not requiring staff to get vaccinated, and we can't require staff to report their vaccine status. So we would need to be able to create a structure that allows us to be able to have people voluntarily report their status. And the same for families that, you know, we
So they're special kind. They're come, they're called
We would need to find some way of tracking threshold. So Lisa, you got to be
It was the only kind they had. It's
So we'll keep the committee posted, and obviously, that's something that the committee would need to vote on at some point later down the road. But we have a few months to put structures in place and determine whether or not it's something that the district wants to take a look at in terms of, you know, de-masking at some point during the school year, depending on what the state of the virus looks like in the schools. I did want to give another food service update. Over the past two weeks, past few weeks, the school and district administration have continued meeting with high school students addressing some concerns that those students had expressed about lunches at the high school. I'm happy to report that portion sizes have increased. A salad option has been added, and the total number of portions of the main lunch option has been increased. So our high school students are still able to, are now able to get all options.
Brian, I think you're frozen.
Not our evening, folks. He will get on board in a few.
Okay.
Just bang him on the side real quick.
But it'll probably take him five minutes to get again.
At least he's not making that weird of a face.
One is always hopeful that you're not in the middle of something that makes you look odd saying.
So I'm just going to help him out. And if you don't mind going ahead with a meeting or something.
Okay, well, yeah, if if everyone approves, we could skip ahead to the warrant subcommittee approval vote. We need to vote if we change the order of anything. So I'm going to ask you if that's okay to do it, because I have to make sure. Is that okay, Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The warrant subcommittee approval, this time we have one accounts payable to approve. It's number 3210, dated 10/27/21. It's in the amount of $339,585.0. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I'm out. Second, sorry.
Cassie's second. Thank you. Again, all in favor, I will come. Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And for folks in the audience, accounts payable means we're paying our bills, and that's what the committee has to approve each time that the warrant to pay all the incoming bills has been signed. So Superintendent will rejoin us momentarily.
Brian's back.
And I think there he is.
I knew what happened. Did Christopher, did you guys just skip right over me and go right to Christopher?
No, we had to do the warrant subcommittee approval. So we did that so you could finish your items, and then we will be ready for that.
Okay. So on, still on food service, though, one of the concerns that's been shared on, from families, has been the disruptions to the menu. There have been many late menu changes, sometimes right down to the day. Sometimes we're not even able to publish those changes because of issues with the supply chain. So I just need to urge families, you know, to be patient with us while we have backup plans. The menus may not be able to be consistent. We're behind by at least two orders currently. Although we have enough food to feed students, we may not be able to provide the menu options that have been published for the month ahead. And so those really could change at any time. I wanted to share also some thank yous. One of the things that Sina spoke about was there was a very successful high school dance at the end of a very high level, high level of participation Spirit Week last week. That was phenomenal, really in every respect. This past Friday, October 22nd, Turner's Falls High School hosted a very successful high school homecoming dance with more than 100 tickets sold prior to the event. At the time of the proposal, the COVID numbers in the area were high. As a result, the district approved the dance, but only if it was held outside. We were blessed with really nice weather, although it was a little cool that night. As Sina said, Taylor Rental provided us with a heater for the tent. Kids had a blast, and they're looking forward to doing more events. Student Council is already planning something different. After more than a year of not being able to get together for such an event, there are many people to thank for putting this together for our high school students. First, I wanted to thank the Student Council officers who did an outstanding job of executing a safe and fun outside event. We would also like to extend our gratitude to High School Guidance Counselor and Student Council Advisor Beth Forton for leading the charge through a very successful Booster Week. We would also like to extend our appreciation to the following members of the community. Paul Wansey, who provided the sound system, including setup and breakdown. Jerry and Beth Palmquist provided and ran a photo booth for students for the evening, and there are a lot of really nice pictures where, you know, they tried to fit entire graduating classes in one picture, and, you know, kids had a blast with that. Rochelle Sloan and Melanie Burnett volunteered and had served food to the students in the cafeteria. Geraldine Vudrin and Nicole Demers thanked, we wanted to thank them for the decorations and the setup for the tables. Rebecca Beck and Yumena Cabeza de Pareja volunteered as parent chaperones. Brian Lamore volunteered his time as a chaperone, and Scott Curtis changed his work schedule so that he could assist for the dance. And I also wanted to thank Dan Minor for chaperone. I mean, I do want to mention that Dan got a really hard time for not bringing the dog with him, because people want to see Mac really and not Dan, which is kind of unfortunate as much as they like him. But I really wanted to take a moment to thank the entire school community for pulling that off, and students were very appreciative. There were lots of unsolicited remarks about we need to do more of this from kids. They had a nice time. It was nice to be able to get together in a social environment. Just wanted to provide a couple of small updates on facilities. The Facilities Department has been and remains somewhat understaffed, placing some school and district projects on delay as cleaning and sanitization remain a priority. As some in the community may have seen, the high school tennis courts have been resurfaced and look great. On November 4th, the company will return to do some minor touch-ups, and the project will be completed. Three companies will be visiting the district to consult and potentially contract to update the Hillcrest and Sheffield Intercom systems, and bids are now being put out to update the Sheffield Fire Alarm System. All surplus items recently posted for bid by the district have received bids, and Joanne Blyer will provide an update on final payments at a future school committee meeting. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Oh, thank you, Brian. Anyone have any questions for Brian at this time? All right. Thank you very much. In that case, the next, moving on to the business section of our meeting, we are going to have a presentation and vote to approve the high school, middle school improvement plan. And I see we have Christopher Barnes with us. Hi, Christopher.
Everybody, thanks for having me. Sorry, it took a minute to get in. We are having some difficulties, but we're here now. So thank you. I believe that Tina is going to permit me to share my screen for this presentation.
Tina, Tina, are you going to do the slideshow for?
No.
Okay.
So I imagine, well, I know actually that the other, the elementary schools follow a similar format that I followed, which is that we use the district improvement plan as the guiding documents for our own improvement plans. So I have five goals. Some of them are already underway, and I'll go ahead and just outline them here. Although I'm generally against reading a PowerPoint, I'm going to do that today. So just bear with me. Great Falls Middle School and Turner's Falls High School staff will welcome and engage students as active partners in supporting their academic and social emotional development. Obviously, the time of returning to school full time after so long out, this is of crucial importance. We have three school adjustment counselors who are fantastic, and they're administering three social emotional health diagnostics to our students, so they may identify students who would benefit from counseling groups. They all have caseloads already, and they continue to take students on in their caseloads. But this is something new that they're doing. Parents and guardians will be informed of the assessments and contacted to provide permission for group work. We've already administered one assessment. Some, we've had a few parents who said, you know, thanks, but we're good, and we want to opt out of that. They have the opportunity to do that. Parents and guardians may also request that their student is included if, if they choose to do so, even though their child may not have shown indication of that through, through the diagnostic. We're also, whoops, we also have two social emotional curriculum type of things that we're doing, one at the high school and one at the middle school. The high school teaching staff will deliver an advisory curriculum to support social emotional learning. Teachers will meet with their advisory groups once a week. This happens on Thursdays for 28 minutes, to be exact. And, and Jessica Fugula-Curtis is the one who organizes and provides that curriculum. We're going to be looking at some other things to get started with in that curriculum and looking at some other opportunities that we have in order to sort of bolster the work there. Great Falls Middle School Teaching Staff implemented circle power and respect to each day in the morning to build community and to implement curriculum in discussion to support social emotional learning. That's just a 15-minute segment, but it is every day. Think, you know, last year before, before everybody was back, even though I wasn't in the district, I'm sure that all districts were talking about some of the same things. And that was that we really need to be on top of supporting our students when they return. We know that there's going to be a variety of different struggles, just being in school every day, adjusting back to the schedule, but also, you know, social emotional struggles that they may have. So, you know, these are a number of ways that we're trying to stay on top of that. Oops. Second goal. Great Falls Middle School and Turner's Falls High School staff will welcome and engage students and families as active partners in the learning process, who take pride in students' efforts, student efforts, and make positive contributions to the school community. I really, I really should have included the homecoming on this one, because as Brian pointed out, it was a great success. And I just will point out, Brian, or everybody, on Friday, I think the number was, before lunch, the number was about 105, or maybe that was Thursday, and I heard Beth Forton announce at the high school meeting today that I think it was 131. So that's really fantastic. But we really want to engage students and families as active partners, and I think that's done in all manner of ways. It's done through a homecoming. Some other ways that we're, that we're going to work on this is going to have a minimum of two parent guardian student surveys that will be conducted to gain feedback from community members, and how we might improve how we welcome students, how we might improve our programming or augment our programming, and thereby engage students as active partners in their learning. First one is going to go out next month. You know, for me, part of the work that I saw that needed to be done was, was really building up the school community again. And so this is, this is one way to do that. We're also going to host a What's New at School extravaganza at the end of the first semester with the intention being to highlight our great programming and to engage Great Falls Middle School students and Turner's Falls High School students in the opportunities that we offer. So those two initiatives are related. Want to hear from, from the community as to what should we have that'll make the school better and to keep kids here, to have more kids, to attract more kids to our school. And so then we're going to have a, you know, an evening where we can really show off what we're, what we're doing. We're also working hard to publicize the great work of our students through social media and local news outlets. I know that Rachel VaKula, working for the district, is constantly reaching out to us around that. But I'm also working with, you know, the, the Adam Graves, the goodness gracious, tongue tied here.
Athletic director.
Thank you. Athletic director. And we have a good relationship with a gentleman who works at the recorder. He's been over to our school half a dozen times. We really just want people to know what a great place our school is. And that's another way to get that out there. Goal three, educators will regularly monitor the impact of instruction on student learning and make adjustments to maximize student growth and achievement. That's the goal, and we have two parts to it, because really it's separated into two groups of teachers. The first group of teachers are the mathematics and ELA teachers, and they're going to conduct quarterly diagnostics of student learning using the online platform iReady. They're going to use the data that they gain to target skills that groups or individuals are struggling with and plan instructional approaches to meet student needs. Pretty much the same work is going to be done by the rest of the teachers, but they're just not going to use iReady. What they're going to do is they're going to, they've been doing, I should say, already through, I believe we've had already three in-service afternoons. Educators will dedicate their in-service time to developing and reviewing formative assessments. So they, you know, they all came together and said, you know, here are formative assessments. They talked about that, what that meant, and really what they want out of those assessments, how to, how to improve those assessments. Then they are going to implement the assessments, review the resulting data, and plan instructional adjustments so that they may have a positive impact on student learning and achievement. So again, pretty similar work by these two groups, but only one of them is able to use the platform iReady, because it only, you can only use it for mathematics in the LA. The fourth goal, educators will deliver great appropriate instruction with high expectations for all students and provide scaffolding to access learning. And this is really in tandem with the DESI roadmap. Teachers are, have submitted goals, and the district, through Brian's leadership, recommended several goals that they could work on and would also be areas where they would meet DESI roadmap goals. So, and part of that is delivering grade level instruction. So educators are working with school administrators and district personnel, primarily Jean Powers, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and also Pat Bell, someone with whom we've contracted to do a lot of curriculum work as well, to meet the goals of the DESI roadmap, which allows educators to continue to deliver grade level instruction while providing scaffolding to support students where they have gaps in learning. And while it may sound, you know, elementary to deliver grade level instruction right now, it's not. You know, kids have a lot of gaps in the learning, but, you know, the DESI has said, we're going to keep on, we're delivering grade level instruction, but we also need to be paying attention to where the kids need some extra support. So that's really important work there. But we're also going to use team leader meetings, department chair meetings, faculty meetings, to share methods and strategies aimed at high expectations for all students and providing scaffolding to ensure access to learning. So that's our goal number four. And then the final goal, with a ton of text on this slide, educators are going to commit to creating an inclusive and equitable school environment that provides relevant and accessible educational opportunities, embodies social justice practices, and infirms all, affirms all students' cultures and identities. The first initiative here began last year. Staff at Turner's Falls High and Great Falls Middle formed a racial justice group last year, aimed at engaging in critical conversations about race and racism. This is a group, a large group. It may be 25 people, I'm not sure. And last year, they screened as a group, "I'm Not a Racist, Am I?" And the ongoing work is to bring that same film to be screened to students prior to the holiday break. But there's work to be done prior to that, because we want to be sure that the group discussions that follow are going to be properly facilitated. So that's the work that's going on right now to, to make sure that the faculty members are properly trained, should gain students safely and supportively in this work. I, the next, the next goal, the next initiative on here is really led by Superintendent Beck, but, but there are, I believe, is it, Brian, is there a dozen students involved at the high school?
Yeah, a little more than that.
Okay. And it's, you know, because it's the students at the high school, I thought it was important to also include it here. Fall of 2021, we will afford to form a student leadership group to be trained by Quab, Quab mediation, the training, training active bystanders, tab for short, will prepare these student leaders to recognize when they are bystanders, to analyze situations, and to evaluate the consequences for everyone involved. We have a fantastic group of students, and I want to thank Brian for putting that together. We also have, you know, again, through work that Jean Powers is doing, opportunities for teachers to be trained by Quab mediation, and that just occurred last Wednesday during our in-service day. We had about 20 teachers who, both from middle and high school, were trained by Quab mediation, so that they may also recognize when they are bystanders, analyze situations, and evaluate the consequences for everyone involved. So these are three initiatives aimed at meeting goal number five. So those are So those are the goals for the middle school and high school. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Any questions for Christopher? Thank you so much. That looked really thorough, you know, very impressive work and and definitely just what the district. Is needing Mike. Mike.
I noticed you were talking about avenues for. Making student work visible and known, and I just throw out there is that. Public access television may be able to help. We can get you information on who to contact over there for some of that because there's, we could have an education channel in town. The only thing really preventing that is having the content to do it, which is not to suggest that I'm putting that on your plate. Just saying it's another tool available.
I really appreciate that. I'm trying to really keep this on the front of my mind and I keep telling everybody else to keep it on the front of their minds. So so that they remember that we need to contact the reporter, but yeah, if somebody could put me in contact with somebody there, I appreciate it. We recently. Had some work that students were doing through one of the classes and ultimately put scarecrows at the, somebody help me out, the night of the scarecrows or the. What's that?
Scarecrows in the park.
Thank you. So that was, that was great. And also we have several staff members involved in, and they do this on a yearly basis, but I think it's important to be celebrated. In feeding families during Thanksgiving time and the work that they do behind that. So. Both of those stories were published just recently, I believe. I know the scarecrow one was, and I believe the other one was as well. So. Thank you and please send along a contact. We're going to work hard to. Make it known the great things that we're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And in addition to the Greenfield Recorder, we also have the Montague Reporter Newspaper. Is very good at at publicizing things for us. We appreciate them both a lot.
And if, you know what, it's somebody, I'm sure somebody has a, I know that I saw a story there the other day of Izzy Va coola Curtis and.
I was just going to say that Christopher Izzy is a. Writer for the paper.
I guess I could just, I could just contact Izzy for for us to publicize things there as well. Yep, and we'll do that. For sure. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You got a reporter right under your nose, right in the building.
Yes.
Perfect. That's what we're looking for.
Boots on the ground. She's there. Thank you so much, Christopher.
Thank you.
Okay, next item under business, a discussion and vote to approve the superintendent's annual goals.
Sorry, Jane, is the, is the committee able to take a vote to approve the high school?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do need to vote, don't we? We were so interested in it. We forgot about the voting part. Well, that probably would be good. I will entertain a motion to approve the.
So moved, Cassie.
Cassie, thank you, Cassie move. Nick. Thank you. Roll call vote. Cassie.
Yes.
Heather. Oh, I think she had to leave. Mike.
Yep.
Bill.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, thank you.
Thanks for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you. And thanks for the reminder. I never mind reminders. There's too many things to remember. Next on our agenda, discussion and vote to approve the superintendent's annual goals. And Brian has included. That all that information in our packet, Brian.
So Tina, are you able to share some slides or would you like me to share them? I think, let me open these up. I just put together a brief summary. So similar to Christopher. Given that we have five areas of long-term strategic planning. That I focused developing these goals so that it won't be the first time that you'll hear about them. But I just put a little bit more detail in the goals that I'll report out on toward the end of the year. So.
Excuse me, Brian, just a second.
Yep.
Somebody in the audience has their microphone left off. If you could please turn it off, we're hearing you at home.
So in the development of the goals, I wanted to make sure that I, like the administrators, like the teachers that were focusing our energies on on trying to execute as few things as possible and to do those things well. So alignment was important. The first thing that these goals are aligned with are is this three-year. Long-term strategic goals as well as the annual district strategic objectives. In fact, each of these goals was pulled from directly from those objectives. Which were already approved by school committee at a previous meeting. In addition, they're also aligned with the recommended evaluation focus indicators. For my evaluation as well as the teacher instructional focus indicators and school improvement plans. So the first goal. In family engagement is to implement the district communications improvement plan. We've been fortunate to have some members of the school committee as parents as well as some other. Parents and members of the community who have volunteered their time to come up and consult with us and provide us some information about. Things that parents would like to see in district communications and so. Again, like as Christopher had mentioned, Rachel Va coola here in this office as well as Tina Mahaney have been incredibly helpful. And Rachel has helped to create a superintendent's newsletter. The first version, which will go out tomorrow, and this is in response to. You know, what I think was really valuable insight and information that I received from parents that said. We'd like to see more than COVID information come out of the superintendent's office. We know that there's more than just a virus going on there at school. So we'll regularly publish a superintendent's newsletter that includes things like events, recognitions. Child and family resources and other relevant information about schools and programs as as well as highlighting and advertising things that are coming up. We want to also develop a process to maintain updates to all areas of the district website. There have been many updates. There are still some things that need to be updated, some things that need to be removed. And improve the accessibility of the information that's provided on the website by creating. Rachel has created connections for us through social media that's more widely used than simply the internet. And to take the time to survey district families at least twice over the course of the school year. And staff about the effectiveness of school and district communications as well as to gather feedback on continued improvements. And ideas from the community. The second goal is around student engagement. Want to work to increase the opportunities for student learning beyond the classroom. The idea of expanding extracurricular opportunities, community service. Groups, student leadership and internships. We want to survey families, students and staff to identify areas of extracurricular interests and expertise. Also want to take a look at the, what's called the. Schedule B stipend positions that exist in the contract and are budgeted for, some of which are holding spots where we no longer have viable clubs. And work with the union leadership to make changes and reallocate those resources into clubs, teams. Service groups, leadership or internship opportunities that would then. Actually have students in it and we would have a need for an advisor for. We also want to take time to identify community partners. Who can help support or provide resources to expand student learning opportunities beyond the classroom. Part of what we would expect to see is outcomes here would be increased number and variety of extracurricular activities available with increased participation of students. In all schools. And, you know, increased opportunities for field trips, guest presenters and community building events across the district. Goal three, there is to develop structures that allow for effective use of the data analysis days. You know, whether or not we, as an administrative team, make a request of the committee to. Continue those four days that we requested for this year to take a look at what we knew would be very important. Student data in the wake of so much lost learning. That we want to make sure that these days are going to work well for us. If we're going to come back to the committee and ask for them to remain in the school calendar for another year or so. So we're going to analyze the measures of growth and achievement in math, E L A and social emotional learning that will be used to establish baseline data and set targets for student growth and achievement. At the previous school, two, two school committee meetings ago. Jean Powers shared the MCAS scores for the district, which is one example. Tonight she'll share some more information. About. Baseline measures of growth and achievement that we've started off with at the start of this school year. And to develop protocols within the administrative team to evaluate academic. Social, emotional and behavioral data to make effective adjustments to practice. Part of what we expect to see is the, you know, the completion, the development of individual student targeted intervention plans for those students who are. In greatest need of making advancements in growth. And we would also expect to see improved scores on the measures of growth and achievement in math, E L A and social emotional learning that Jean will share a bit later this evening. In the goal on great appropriate instruction, and you'll notice that. These next two goals really are focused on the secondary level. But to provide support for instruction to staff to expand scaffolding to allow access to grade level content and skills. And implement tiered instructional model, we've contracted contracted with a consultant Pat Bell. Who has been working with high school staff and administration as well as with Jean Powers and Diane Ellis. Over the last several weeks, she has a great deal of expertise in accommodating diverse learners and also universal design for learning. Is an area of significant area of expertise from Miss Bell. We will also support the implementation of a variety of formative assessments to allow for ongoing monitoring. Of student academic growth, in particular at the secondary level. Jean will talk about some of those that have been added in for this year and Christopher has also worked with his instructional leadership at the secondary level. To put in place intermittent course assessments built within courses. To assist with that monitoring process. And then to work with the consultant and instructional teams to support educator identification of the skills necessary for students to access grade level content and skills. So one of the things that teachers need to continue to develop their skills on is identifying. What things my students might not have learned last year that they need to know for today's lesson. And being able to do that in a systemic way, ultimately, I hope will forever change the way that we. Teach students and the way that students learn. Again. There are two primary. Or three primary measurable outcomes here. One, we want to see observable changes in instructional practice that includes the use of instructional scaffolds or differentiation of student learning activities. As well as we want staff to self-assess their capacity to provide effective instructional scaffolding. And again, we're going to expect as a result of these practice, changes in practice. To see improved scores of students. In growth and achievement as well as social emotional learning. And then the final goal. Christopher alluded to earlier, training students to be active bystanders so that they may recognize acts of harm, understand techniques to intervene. And provide support to a trust, provide support for reporting to trusted adults. We have actually completed the the high school active bystander training at this point. We've completed the staff training. And we're into the next step and this is well underway. I'm really appreciative of Quabin mediation. Working with us because I initially, they weren't going to be able to do this for us until January and I thought, well, that's going to just take too long to implement something that we hope is going to be. An effective tool to help us be able to change norms in the middle school and do that through the leadership of trained high school student leaders. But the next step really is to establish a club. With the charter group of of trained active bystanders, including a student activities account. And collaboration structures to allow them to work directly with the middle school team and the school and district administration. And to have them in a situation where. They are able to effectively implement all six units of instruction. At one middle school grade level this year, when we expand the group next year. Because we trained sophomore and junior students so that those students will still be in school next year. When we have a new group of trained active bystanders and we can expand the group. To about thirty five to forty members every year and keep that in perpetuity. Might give us an opportunity because these students can make recommendations about, well, we might want to bring some of this down to the elementary schools. You know, we may want to pull in guest speakers for the community. We might want to present to parents what it is that we do and help them to understand how students can help impact. Behavioral norms in a school community. I'm very impressed with the group of students and the work that they did and I'm very appreciative of the amount of time that they've spent. Out of class. Effectively to make this happen. As the training was very intense, it took two and a half full days of school over the course of two weeks and those students have a lot of catch-up work to do. So it'll be important for us to make sure that we don't spread them too thin and that we're able to have. Meetings on a regular basis that don't don't impact their class schedule. So that the only impact that they have to their class schedule in through the remainder of the school year is just when they deliver the units of instruction. At the end of the year, I'll have the students also doing a set, students and staff do an assessment. Of the effectiveness of the first year of implementation for the purpose of making recommendations for year two when the group is larger. And that's it for my goals presentation for this upcoming school year.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have any questions for Brian about his presentation? Lots of good information there. In that case, I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the superintendent's annual goals.
So moved.
Mike, thank you.
Second.
Cassie seconded. Cassie.
Yes.
Mike.
Me too.
Bill.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. That leads us into the next item on our agenda this evening is. The school committee needs to vote to approve the focus indicators for the superintendent's evaluation. Brian and I both attended a Zoom meeting about superintendent evaluation, just maybe a couple of months ago. Where there was some good information on how to make it more successful for a superintendent to present. How he's accomplished his goals and also for the school committee to assess it. On the wonderful evaluation sheet that we need to fill out at the end of the year. So this should help having these focus indicators that we've all understood at the beginning and that can be. Referenced as we go along through the year and Brian has included those as well in our packet. If you'd like to go over those, Ryan.
Yeah, and so again, there's. They've, the recommendation of M A S C is somewhere between six and eight indicators. Jean Powers and I met to take a look at the superintendent's rubric and align it with. As I had mentioned, the teacher focus indicators, so. Meeting diverse needs, adjustments to practice and family engagement are all part of. Our long-term district strategy as well as our annual district strategy as well as. Priority indicators for instructional staff so that there's alignment right down through to what teachers are doing in the classroom with this. We did also integrate, integrate. Things still related to the pandemic, focusing on social and emotional wellbeing. Another indicator on student health and safety, which still takes priority, community and stakeholder engagement. And then policies and practice and continuous learning of staff are all things that. I would expect to be providing evidence or artifacts on along with my goals and obviously some of my goals. Fit into these indicators and so it reduces the overall amount of information, one that I'll need to submit and two. That the committee would need to review at the end of the year. If that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. And I forgot to mention that Brian did include these. Yes, thank you. And I forgot to mention that Brian did include these focus indicators. A couple of meetings ago when we were first discussing it and looking at this. Anyone have any questions for Brian about these focus indicators? If not, the hope is that we can vote to approve these as well this evening. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second that.
Mike, we have a second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Has anyone thought of any questions they'd like to ask Mike?
I did have a few thoughts around the four B one policies and practices. I appreciate the I think maybe I'll just make a brief comment because I don't think that tearing down the, the, the narrative or the language of all these is necessarily all that important. What's important is that it's clear, we understand where you're getting at. And I know you're also concerned about having the language be in compatible with the Desi's expectations, but the I'll read the, as the goal as you have it. Proficient language and evaluation rubric develops and implements culturally responsive policies and practices that acknowledge the diverse backgrounds and any strengths and challenges of administrators, students and staff. And provides administrators with relevant resources to support them in building cultural, I'm sure it's culturally, but we know what you mean, culturally responsive learning environments and a school culture that affirms individual differences. I mean, I, on one level, I wish that just said and, and affirms individuals or each individual focusing on the differences, the similarities are also important. And I realized that this, I mean, the the, there's a, an intent behind the language. Because we are concerned about dealing with the social justice, et cetera. So just saying equality, it's sort of like the difference between all lives matter and black lives matter. I mean, yeah, we get it, but it's important that we make the point that black lives matter because the rest of them don't seem to be so much in question. So there are reasons to have the language, you know, so as specific as it is. But I, I just want to make sure that we include everybody in that it's about affirming all of the individuals, not just the ones who've been specifically underappreciated through time. Because as we, you know, students are here for a limited amount of time. Well, we want to make sure that all of them get, you know, the right treatment all the way through. Maybe this is just something that might come up during our school committee discussion on goals and language, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, Mike, thank you. The, the language is actually comes, we, we pulled it directly from the rubric and just copied and pasted it into this document. So the language is yeah, and I think their effort really is to try to keep the definition of proficiency up around thirty thousand feet to provide superintendents, the flexibility to be able to implement initiatives that would be consistent with having achieved that descriptor.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm pushing all the wrong buttons here. Yeah, no, I agree with that. But I mean, from the, from our point of view, it's also important that that we are in touch with the specific issues that we're dealing with. That's why I said it's probably not the right place that I, I just couldn't help myself.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else have question or a comment before we take a vote? Again, thank you very much. I think this will help streamline a process that at, at best is not going to be very streamlined, but at least it's improving. And I think that's our goal is to see improvement in it. So.
And again, Tina, Tina and I will work with Jane and Cassie on, you know, developing a more user friendly tool for the committee than the one that we have currently. I mean, you're not going to have to rate the superintendent on all thirty four or thirty five indicators anymore. You can rate on the focus indicators and that would give in the goals. And that gives you the opportunity to issue the rating in each of the four standards and the overall rating. So we'll work on a tool perhaps in a Google form or something like that. That might be easy. Eat much easier than the current Word document and, you know, handwritten docs that. So I think it will streamline things for the committee as well.
Yes, I think it will. The ability to change the document itself to match what we're including should help us a great deal.
Yep. And the focus indicators obviously can change from year to year and we should be able to use the same tool.
Thank you. In that case, I will call for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item under businesses update on the six town regional planning board. I know we won't all.
Oh, you froze Jane. Oh, she totally froze.
Cassie? Next up is the six town regional school committee. Yeah, go for it.
The whole thing is left out. Great.
So I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update. Last, last week I was able, I think Bill was, was attended as well. The, and I believe that was a meeting of the full board. I don't think it was a subcommittee meeting. I was able to be there with Joanne, with Joanne Blyer for much of the time. The day or two after that meeting, we did receive two bids for a facilitator. And the six town regional planning board is trying to hold a basically an emergency meeting on Thursday evening to allow the full board to weigh in on which of the two bids they would like to accept to have a facilitator and they need, still need to spend some time to really define what that facilitator is going to do. So there's still some work ahead. I also encourage them to engage in a process of, of trying to figure out how they want to begin to be more more communicative with the community about the work that's been done already. So people have an opportunity to take a look at that. Whether or not they want to write summaries or perspectives of the committee. Or just leave it out there in the open, but I, I'll, I'll follow the direction of the planning board as they deliberate and go through how they'd like to communicate this information out to to towns folks and members of each school community. Bill, is there anything that you want to add from the meeting?
Yeah. I really appreciate, and I think the board really appreciates you and Joanne attending our meeting for one thing. And it's great to, to know you're engaged on that level. The meeting Thursday evening will be to talk about the two candidates. And we'll go forward from there. The business about communication of where we're at and what we've done is, is definitely on everybody's mind. And I think we're all impatient to move forward, but it's, it's taken time. So maybe it's just a tortoise race. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, having a board, I'm sure that there's a lot of thoughtful people there and that was a good discussion where you know, I think I certainly exhibited some impatience about getting information out and I think people rightfully shaped that impatience with the need for the, the board to present the information thoughtfully so that it can be received with an open mind as opposed to you know, being received as something that's being forced down people's throats. So that's it for us, Jane, I think on this, but we just, I want to keep this on the agenda either standing or from time to time so that, you know, the, the committee is kept in the loop on, on the work as it hopefully you know, will evolves and perhaps intensifies with the community.
Thank you. And we do appreciate Bill and Cassie representing the full committee on that group and Brian and Joanne is being able to attend. Thank you all. Any other questions for any of them? All right. Thank you. Next is our standing issue of discussion of remote in-person school committee meetings. Think part of that had me thinking about it again because the, there has been an extension of the mask mandate for schools. Therefore, as we discussed last time, that would impact how well we would be able to be heard if we were meeting in person with microphones. And our masks, it might not make us very intelligible to the population listening. So I think until something different comes up, we'll continue in this manner. We will continue to have a Zoom audience and record it and broadcast it as much as possible. And MCTV has been very helpful that way in broadcasting for us in real time. That's great. And Tina Mahaney has been recording it for, to be put on our website. So we'll continue in that manner until something changes in general, if that's acceptable. Mike?
It occurred to me after we discussed the usefulness of the Zoom setup. That it might be useful in, in our meetings with students. Which we've, of course, have been unable to do since we can't get into the building. And it might even facilitate more attendance by school committee persons who are stuck in work or other situations where they can't necessarily be at the school at nine thirty in the morning. Just want to throw that out, possibility.
Yes, I think that's a great suggestion to think about because it has impacted the fact that we have been able to meet with the students. And even when we did in person, as you say, their schedules were limiting. We tried to do it during the lunchtime and all around, it was challenging. This might be able, it might make it possible for more students to participate as well. Cassie, did you have a thought?
No, I was just going to second what Mike said because it's always been challenging to get there and I've always wanted to be part of those, but I couldn't with my schedule. So I think like offering that remote option might be easier.
So maybe with that in mind, we should have on our next agenda to pick a date and a time when we would like to ask any members of the student body. Sometimes we've suggested that class officers or student council officers meet with us, but I think it would also be nice. And at times then we've just put it out to the entire student body if anybody's available. So we could do any number of things and I think it'd be great to get that started. That there's nothing like getting communication from students that really is so helpful. So I will keep that and Cassie and I will keep that in mind and we will put it on the next agenda. Okay, thank you. Next item on our business portion is a second reading of policy ACAB. Policies need three readings. This is the second one. It's a rather involved policy. So we have included again, the original and we've included the revised policy. If anyone has any questions at the moment, we'd be glad to entertain them. Otherwise, we will put it on the next agenda and at that time call for a vote. So we will get it officially in our policy manual in the new revised edition. Okay, thank you. Next item is discussion about addressing pandemic learning loss. And I think Brian mentioned that perhaps Jean Powers will be joining us for that. Hi, Jean.
Our director of teaching and learning, Jean Powers has is going to be sharing our baseline information from another data source. So I'll hand it over to Jean. Jean, Tina, I'm not sure if you're going to share Jean's presentation or whether or not Jean's going to do it.
Jean, you're welcome to do it unless you want me to.
Okay, I can do it. That's fine. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right. So as Brian said, you know, last time we met, we discussed the MCAS results from the spring and I wanted to bring the iReady diagnostics for the, for the fall assessment, just to get everyone to see where we're falling as a district. So this is the first time we've added iReady diagnostics for math and reading in grade six through twelve. So we're going to kind of go through it. You'll get a sense of where we fell for our diagnostics. And then talk a little bit about next steps and what we're planning on doing with the data. So if you have any questions as I go through, feel free to stop me and we'll talk about it. So this data right here is math. So it take, if you take a look, we've set it up so that the entire district is represented here. As you can see that the total students assessed is not the full eight hundred and five that we have in our system. Because some nine through twelve students are in semester based math or ELA courses. So since we're in a semester format for the middle high school, we ended up assessing them at the beginning of their semester of that course. So anyone who hasn't, who has math or an ELA class in the spring semester wouldn't have been assessed yet. Our kindergarten students also haven't been assessed based on their assessment structure. They do a number of other assessments early on before they get to iReady. So this is an overall, if you can see, there's three percent that are at mid or above grade level, thirteen percent that's early on in the grade level that they're currently in. Thirty nine percent. And again, this is math is one gray level below twenty two percent is two gray levels below and twenty three percent are three or more gray levels below. Looking at reading. Oh, sorry. So I just pulled it out by domain. So you could see it's the same. You know, categories, the green with the slash at the beginning is on gray level. So this is just the four math domains. Allows us to see a little bit more specifics for where students are falling in math. And then taking a look at reading. So if you take a look, we're at fourteen percent mid or above grade level. So if you saw math, math was three. Fifteen percent on gray level, thirty two percent, one gray level below seventeen percent, two gray levels below and twenty three percent, three or more. Twenty three percent was the same for three or more below in math. And so you know, one of the things we'll talk about is what do we do? How do we dig into this information a little bit more deeply? Reading as the district. Sorry, this is the, how we're doing in the domain areas. So we're doing very well. Phonological awareness, which are things we, we learn in our early, early grades. So that's a positive to see that those things and phonics and high frequency words are things that we've as a district are doing really well in. Then you can kind of see vocabulary comprehension in both literature and informational texts. Those are places that we want to look at and dig into. So then I broke it into elementary and secondary again, just so we could see this a little bit more closely. So you can see by grade and again, this is the schools together. So this would be Gill and Hill Crest for grade one and then two through five would be Gill and Sheffield and then sixth grade represents the sixth grade at Great Falls and Gill combined. So that's math at elementary. Same groupings, reading at elementary. So you can kind of see how they, how it changes over the different, different years and the percentages that go along with that. And then I just pulled together the same for the secondary. So this is math. So you can see no 12th graders have an assessment math and that's because they're, the 12th grade math classes actually happened in the spring semester. So you'll see that most sixth, seventh and eighth are most, almost everybody has this been assessed. There's a couple of students who had been absent for extended period of time who weren't assessed. And then some of the older grades, it's because of their semesters that they're not fully assessed yet. But you kind of get a sense again, with some areas, you know, a little bit higher area here in ninth grade. And then this is reading again at the secondary level. So thinking about how we use this, so at elementary level, there's an instructional platform that goes along that is K to eight. And so some teachers use it at the elementary level throughout the week in their classroom. Elementary teachers use this data to address their own Elementary teachers use this data to address their own instruction and practice. And then classroom teachers, along with the reading specialist teachers, use this data along with other data such as the BAST testing. So the benchmark assessment test for reading to make their reading and intervention groups. So it is, is data that's used. Middle school level, the middle school team is using the instructional platform in their study skills class. So again, the instructional platform is kind of the, the tool that is used K to six, or K to eight, that allows students to be placed based on their diagnostic testing into a platform where they can go and they do lessons and activities and they build their skills. High school teachers who have students that tested below grade nine, because the instructional platform only goes up to grade eight, they're able to turn that on for reading or math. So some of our students, like in one of our algebra classes, our teacher is using it to support some of the gaps that students, that she's seen with students. Some of our students in special education who tested below grade nine are allowed, we allow them to have this turned on so that they can get some more additional support. And then both middle school and high school teachers are using the data to inform their own instruction. So that's our plan and that's how we're using it. You know, elementary has been using it for a few years now, and this is the first time for secondary. And then really next steps, if it's a full year course, so grades K to eight, it's, the assessment happens three times a year. So we're going to have another assessment in January. So be able to actually measure the growth and continue to adjust instruction. For our nine through 12 semester courses, we only test two times a year. So at the beginning of their semester and at the end, that was just a way for us to figure out the, you know, the easiest way for us to do the assessment and then allow teachers to use that information more in real time as opposed to doing a test at the beginning of the year, but then the teacher not seeing that student until January. Continuing to monitor progress and how students are doing on the instructional platform, both in minutes, how many lessons that they're completing and what percentage rate is their completion. We're going to, we've been looking at specific student groups. We're going to continue administratively and with support staff to review, you know, high need students and look at some correlations between the iReady data and other data similar to what the reading teachers have done. And then we just started to brainstorm ideas for how we can do additional support, whether we look at, you know, vacation week support, after school support, summer for next school year, and then additional interventions throughout the day. So again, iReady is new to the secondary level. So we're still figuring out the kinks and it's something that's been used at the elementary level that I know the principals of the elementary schools want to continue to build on teachers using it within their classroom with their students. And I will stop sharing. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments for Jane?
Jean, thank you not only for putting the presentation together, but also for your coordination at the secondary level with Mr. Barnes and with Pat Bell and with the middle school and high school leadership to, to get people trained to be able to implement these assessments.
Yeah, you're welcome. Mike, I think I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. I wonder, Jean, if, if you have any feel for how much of this, of these results are related specifically to learning loss from the pandemic?
Yeah, I think that's something we're going to dig into a little bit more specifically at the elementary level. We're going to be able to use the iReady data to understand that a little bit more deeply because they've used it previously. So we can kind of get a sense, look back. I believe they used iReady last year over the pandemic year. So the principal, elementary principals, and I will dig into that and look at what some of the scores were previously. At the secondary level, we're not going to be able to tell as much just because this is the first year we've used it. That's a great question.
Well, in term, and one more, in terms of brainstorming on what to do, I particularly concerned about those at nine, 10, 11, 12th grade who are three or more years behind. For whatever reason, have you ever worked with a district that had a fifth or sixth year?
We've, I have, my previous district, we did have a fifth year for select students based on the you know, it's definitely something to explore and look at. I think one of the biggest things that for the high school level is to be able to find a way to support those students that may be struggling or, you know, more than a couple of grade levels below and finding that instructional time for them to use the intervention platform for iReady. So one of the things Mr. Barnes and I have talked about is during the gap time in, there's a block, it's called GAP, where they have whole class meetings and advisory and looking at providing some extra support during that time. So we're still building on that. But specifically for the high school, a lot of it leans into the teachers using that data to make instructional changes with their students.
Thank you. That was good information. Anyone else have a question or comment for Jean? I, I think it is, it's an interesting way of accumulating and assessing data that will be helpful for guiding learning. I think as always, getting in more time where time is tight is difficult, as you say, and I know with expectations of all courses at all levels of continuing, you know, every day to the next chapter, to the next item, making time and ways for students to access that extra bit of support they need if there's an area of difficulty is challenging to.
Right. And Pat Bell and Mr. Barnes and I have been planning for those data days that have been added into the schedule to use the iReady results to build and look at protocols to be able to use that data to make it effective. So I think those data days are going to be very, very helpful.
Thank you. Again, right, data is only as useful as the time we make to assess the data and decide how to implement the revisions, right? One can collect all they want, but has, has to have time to decide how to use it and what to do. Good, good point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is discussion about school committee goals. At our last meeting, we looked over the work that we had done at a previous working meeting where we worked on establishing goals and got them pretty well roughed out. Suggestion was made last time that perhaps we need to have another dedicated meeting to work on them because as it exists, our business meetings are pretty full of items that are certainly necessary and, and important. But in order to get this in a final form that people feel is as accurate as we can be for our own goals. That was the latest suggestion. And I guess if people are looking at doing it in November, perhaps a Tuesday in November, when we're not having a regular school committee meeting because people in general tend to have their Tuesdays more available because of the second and fourth meetings, that meant we could look at November 16th or November 30th, if people want to work on it this month. Those two would be open. Any suggestions?
I'm up for the 16th.
Okay, Mike says the 16th would work for him. Do our other members look like the 16th will work for them?
So I might just add, if we do the 30th, we still have like space between meetings because we don't meet again until the 14th.
Okay, the way the Tuesdays fall into.
Yeah, so it's just, you know how some, some times we get like three weeks between the meeting. I'm, I'm fine with either. I just want to put that out there for anyone that feels like they need a break.
Be a good, good point. Something to think about either way.
We must, stepping on Jane there, she's froze on my computer. But that we may also want to use that, oh, mine's unstable now too. But we may want to use some of that time for a second meeting in December as well. Because it looks like the second or third and fourth Tuesdays are going to be tight. But so I mean, it's, it's all in the mix.
Yeah, I don't think it really matters. I just wanted to throw that out there. Mike, you're always unstable, just to put that out there.
I've come to understand I am because my computer keeps repeating at every meeting. So it's, it's all good. Any other thoughts? Is the 16th going to work for everyone here at the moment? You could do like a thumbs up or thumbs down because it isn't an actual vote. If that's acceptable, 16th, will it work? All right, well, let's schedule that. And if something does come up and we have to change it or we need another meeting at another time, we will say the 16th, we will also say what we did last time. If it's acceptable, we could start at six o'clock and have it go no longer than eight o'clock. And certainly if we were just efficient and got done earlier, that would be fine too. So let's say six to eight max on the 16th of November. Thank you. That sounds like a great idea. Discussion and potential vote on MAS C resolutions. We had a long discussion of the resolutions that will be presented at the November conference in Hyannis and Jennifer Warrius is our representative. And unfortunately, she's not able to join us this evening. It was not an issue that she had, but the world of, that surrounds us that has influenced her ability to be here. So she did not have any others. I did check with her. She did not have any other suggestions other than what we discussed last time. If any of you have any other theories on the resolutions that seemed perhaps the least clear or that we had the most questions about, I certainly can relay those to her. Otherwise, as always, the delegate is certainly allowed to vote as the committee indicated, if we indicated, and otherwise to use their judgment when something comes up, particularly if it, if more information is provided or anything. Amendments can be added and sometimes the amendments don't just clarify, they'd actually change some of the impact of the resolutions. So that is an important flexibility to have. Any ideas or thoughts about that? Okay, in that case, that will be fine. We don't need to vote again because we did vote officially last time and all of the resolutions as presented. And actually with that in mind, the conference is next week. And Jennifer, Cassie, and I will be leaving the, the conference is from Wednesday through Friday evening. Saturday is the delegate assembly of that. So we will certainly bring back way more information than you want about many topics, but it will be helpful. It's always helpful. There's always a lot of good information available. And, and, and from looking at the workshops, all school committees are dealing with the very same thing year to year, and it helps to get more information and.
We lost you, Jane.
As a group, if it's acceptable, the September 14th, 2021, September 28th, 2021, and October 12th, 2021. I will entertain a motion to approve all three together if that's acceptable.
I'll make a motion to accept those three sets of minutes.
Thank you, Mike.
Second, Cassie.
And Cassie seconded. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Look very thorough. Thank you, Sabrina. I will do a roll call vote. Cassie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you all. Our next regularly scheduled meetings are November 9th, a virtual meeting at 6:30. If we need an executive session, we will schedule it just prior to that. We will add by next time, we'll add the November 16th working meeting. And that again, will be certainly posted the way all our meetings are as an open meeting, but it will not be broadcast or, or necessarily taped to working meeting is not done the same way. But the, it's an open meeting if people would like to join in the audience. And then the other one in November is the 23rd. Anything that arises that people would like to put on the agenda for next time, please let us know. Cassie, Brian, and I more than welcome your ideas. They're always helpful. And we generally meet about a week before the next meeting. Okay, if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Oh.
Second.
All right, Cassie.
Got them.
And Mike is seconding and I will do another roll call.
Yes.
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 Nick?
Yes.
Jane?
Oh.
Just say yes, Jane.
Okay. Nick?
We're all good. We got it.
Oh, do not play with me. I'm tired. And I.
I took care of it. Everyone said yes.
Thank you. I think we should adjourn as well. Very good. Thank you all. Have a good.